Good evening and welcome, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustment to order. Today's date is April 22nd, 2024, it's 5:00. At this time, we'll introduce the board beginning. I'm Michelle Cooley, the chair.
Tim Gillum, vice chair.
Linda Ford.
Joseph Eaton.
Paul Rollins, Jr.
Mary Catherine Holt.
You guys did that so good. And now, we'd like to introduce the city staff that'll be assisting us this evening from the Department of Urban Development. Ms. Emily Hayes, Associate Director of Planning. Mr. Jonathan Bowen with the Neighborhood Resources Coordinator. And from the Office of the City Attorney, Ms. Kim King, Associate City Attorney. I feel like you should stand and like do something. And in the back, helping us with recording and the video production, Mr. Kevin Jones. Thank you, guys. Now, the statement of purpose of the zoning board of adjustments, the Board of Adjustments does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the board have the authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law, the city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows. Hear appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city, grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the term as established by the city council therein, grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, a literal enforcement of the code will result in unnecessary hardship. No one factor determines what an unnecessary hardship is, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the property in question is unique in that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. Now, my working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows. The property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. Now, it must relate to the property and not any personal issues. This includes economic, financial gain or loss. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all the property owners in the area. Circumstances that are not hardships, self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenient, personal. Subdivision covenants and HOA regulations. Now, the zoning board of adjustments, ZBA, by virtue of state law and City of Tuscaloosa ordinance, does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, and/or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowner association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. This is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and is streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. There are sign-up sheets outside for public comment. Up to four speakers will be given opportunity to speak in favor of the petition, and up to four speakers will be given opportunity to speak in opposition of the petition. All speakers will have up to five minutes unless the board votes to allow longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to the board. No questions or comments are to be directed to city staff. I would ask city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petition now before the board have been made in accordance with the law.
It has.
Okay. The following procedure will be followed for each petition. This hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the board concerning the same. The petitioner or the petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the board. The petitioner will have up to 10 minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. The four members of the public that are in support of the petition and the four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition who signed up to speak will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. Petition response. At the close of the public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to the comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be allowed up to two minutes unless the board votes to allow a longer time. The chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be allowed up to two minutes unless the board votes to allow longer time. At the close of public comment or once the board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on the petition, the chair will close further comment or discussion, and the board will then discuss the matter. The chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request along with any conditions set by the board, and the board members will commence voting. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the board. Leave signs in your yard. Staff will pick up the signs as soon as possible. Any party aggrieved by the final judgment or decision of such board of zoning adjustment may within 15 days thereafter appeal therefrom to the circuit court by filing with such board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision which the appeal is taking. The board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the board members have conflicts with any of the cases on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so when we get to that on the agenda, Mr. Gillum will recuse himself. Are there any changes, the following cases, or any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are not.
Okay. So, we have our synopsis. Everybody had a chance to read the synopsis? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve.
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The synopses are approved. All right, Ms. King, any reporting or pending status?
There are no updates. There are still no currently pending cases on appeal.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so we're ready to get started. Ms. Hayes?
Okay, good afternoon, board. We'll move into our first case for the night. ZBA 3524 Butch Chandler petitions for a special exception to allow a self-storage facility and a special exception from the maximum floor area ratio on the property located at 520 15th Street, Zone B in Council District 4. So, here's an aerial view of that property as well as zoning. So, this is the old bowling alley, but the property that we're specifically looking at, there is a parcel line here, so this is where we are looking. So, here is a view of that vacant lot today. And then, a closer aerial view, or closer view, sorry. The applicable regulations, so starting with that special exception from the floor area ratio, the maximum floor area ratio for the BN zoning district is .8. And then, the special exception for the self-storage facility, there's discretionary criteria for the board to consider that it should not abut a residential district unless adequate separation and screening is provided, and that the board is satisfied the proposed storage facility will be built and managed in accordance with other businesses. The petitioner is requesting that special exception to construct a multi-story self-storage facility. The proposed floor area ratio of the structure will exceed that maximum .8 floor area ratio for the zoning district. It's right around 1.59. So, the petitioner is requesting a special exception from that as they do not believe that the proposed development will jeopardize the public health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding area. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The proposed 15-foot buffer with the minimum 6-foot opaque wall along the property lines that are abutting that are residential do meet the buffer width requirements that are found in the zoning ordinance. So, here's that proposed site plan. You can see that 15-foot buffer along the north and the eastern sides. That's where it's abutting that residential. It's student housing back there. It's actually in the university residential district. And then, you can also see they've got parking. They are exceeding their parking requirement. It's only about one parking space per employee on the maximum shift. So, here is just that proposed schematics of what that could look like. This is very similar to the one that is existing a little bit further down 15th Street. And this picture is a little bit blurry, so we'll just stick with this one. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Chase Lucas with TTL 3516 Greensboro Avenue, representing the petitioner. He is also here if he has any questions, but I think they explained it pretty well. I will be glad to answer any questions you have about floor area ratio, any other items in regards to the buffer on the subdivision. So, feel free to...
Will you talk about the wall again? You said 15?
Yes, ma'am. So, if you look up there, there's a 15-foot, excuse me, 15-foot minimum building line with the requirement for an opaque wall. That will be built and exceeded if necessary. There's no issue constructing that.
I have a question about landscaping.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you planned?
All landscaping requirements will be met.
Okay, because I was really pleased at the way the other one looked. And at first, I really was not in favor, but...
Yeah.
Well, how will the height of the wall be?
The minimum is six. We will, at a minimum, go six feet.
Would you be opposed to going eight foot, being that you're buttoned in?
I don't think we have a problem going eight foot there, no, sorry.
Yeah, that was my concern. I was...
Yeah.
What about your exterior lighting? Exterior lighting?
I'm sorry?
Exterior lighting?
Exterior lighting.
Exterior lighting, so we have exterior lighting.
That's something...
Which way will it face? Will it face directly towards the building? Another thing facing towards the residential property?
I'd have to ask Mr. Chandler to come up here and answer that.
How y'all doing? My name's Butch Chandler, and I live at 1405 High Forest Drive. And I couldn't hear y'all back there, so repeat that again?
So, the exterior lighting?
We'll have plenty of that. Wall pack lights out there. We have the area that you can see through. It's real lit up from the outside, where you see the fake door area. So, it's real well-lit up. If you go by on 15th Street where we got one of the pictures of, you'll see how well it's lit up there, so.
So, the lighting will be attached to the wall facing the building and not towards...
Wall pack lights on the building where people can see. The covered areas we got, we've got strip lights underneath them as well, too, if you can see real well in there, too.
So, it won't be any flood or it bleed over into the residential neighborhood? Any flooding? No flooding or bleed over into the residential neighborhood?
Oh, no, 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 sir.
And what did you mean by the hours, 8 to 4?
What did I mean by the hours?
8 to 4, like I'm thinking for a storage building. That didn't seem like...
You got the wrong information there. Our gate hours are from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, so it's about 17 hours.
Okay, that's what it, because on here it has Friday, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4.
No, it's 6 to 10 at night, and then, that's for people. It's coded to get in and out of the place. And then, of course, if you get in, it's say 9:50 and want to stay two hours. You can always get out, but it won't let people in after 10, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you want to access at night, I mean, and you're closed, I mean, is it just, is it going to be gated?
Keep added.
Keep pad gated outside?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have about, on average, about 25 to 30 cars a day during that period that come and go. Once people move in, you know, they're not a place they'd go back and visit. But once they get moved in, they're pretty much stay there until you get ready to leave. So, it's not a heavy traffic area either as well, so.
Any more questions for Mr. Chandler? Thank you. Anything else you all want to say to us? Anything else you all have to say to us?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, we don't have anyone signed up for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comments, starting with Mr. Eaton.
I think all the concerns I had were addressed with the lighting as well as the traffic in the area, so I think it's good for the area because you've got student housing that they'll be using, probably using the storage, so I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have an issue with it either. I think it's an appropriate place to put this, and I think because they've done well in the past with the other building, I think it's not going to be a problem. I do am glad that there's student housing behind and not a different kind of residential property. I think that might make a difference for me, but I have no problem with this.
Yeah, I mean, I agree as well. I see no issue. The rendering looks nice. The other building looks nice. I would like to request that you at least consider putting an eight-foot wall up in lieu of a six-foot. But that's the only, the only thing I'd like to see.
I agree with my fellow board members. The eight-foot wall will be something I'd like to put in. Will we be able to put that in the reading stipulation? So, we'd like to put that in the stipulation, but other than that, I don't see a problem.
I agree with all the board members. I'm in favor.
Okay, so we'll close board comments at this time, and we'll read the petition. So, ZBA-35-24 Butch Chandler petitions for a special exception to allow a self-storage facility and a special exception for the maximum floor area ratio on the property located at 520 15th Street, Zone B in Council District 4, with the stipulation of an eight-foot wall. We'll start voting with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Petition approved. Thank you. At this time, we'll allow Mr. Gillum time to leave. And Ms. Holt will be voting on this, our super number eight.
Okay, we'll move into our next case. ZBA 3624 Popstroke petitions for a variance from the electronic, digital, and video sign regulations to maintain an existing sign on the property located at 680 Harper Lee Drive, Zone BH, Council District 5. So, here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then, a closer aerial view. So, this is obviously a very old aerial view. Popstroke is very established on the lot today. So, here is actually a view of that sign that they are requesting for. The applicable regulations, Section 24135, electronic signs does restrict signs to not changing more than every eight seconds. There shall be no effects of movement, blinking, animation, scrolling, or flashing. The image should be instantaneous as seen by the human eye, so just very quick. And then, also, for video technology, it should have dimming abilities, so for conditions that are a little bit more foggy, that it is factoring in those nits to be able to lower them as the conditions, whether it be nighttime or just foggy conditions. The petitioner is requesting a variance to maintain a television that was installed on a structure attached to the building. The television will show, quote, "traditional TV sports programming and content." This is per the petitioner. Dimensions are approximately 11 and 1/2 feet by a little over 6 and 1/2 feet. And per the petitioner, Popstroke is a national golf entertainment brand and a leader among businesses offering recreation and technology. As such, digital immersion is a critical part of their customer experience, including interaction with the Popstroke app, as well as for numerous video board displays on the property. Do you have any questions for staff?
So, the issue is that they're using it as a television as opposed to just a digital board. So, if they were just to flip different things, they could just do it with no problem.
So, that's, that's correct. Essentially, the sign itself, if it were to be just a sign, it would be permitted. The other signs that are along that same structure have been permitted as just signs. They are just keeping that still shot of Popstroke. This one specifically, it's a little bit of a unique case with this that it is being considered, because it's up there on that sign structure, it has to be considered a sign, but it really is just acting as a television.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hayes. No other?
Good evening, board. My name's Gary Delvecchia. I'm the construction manager for Popstroke. Shane could not be here tonight, so I represent Popstroke on this matter.
You give us your address?
Sorry?
Your address for us?
10240 157th Street, North Jupiter, Florida, 33478.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, per what we said up there, it is very, the video boards and the immersiveness of our technology and audiovisual is very important to the Popstroke brand. This particular sign, as we understand, the other three, North, South, and West, face a very busy highway. This particular video board faces east and is over Harper Lee, which is, to my knowledge, a kind of a pass-through road. Beyond that is just a field owned by the Plot family. So, and what you're seeing there with the stairs coming down, that is a play court area. So, that's for, you know, when we're playing games, when they're putting the Alabama football games, basketball, all the sports events. It's important to us to have that screen, so as a primary for those games.
So, the other three sides are just steel with Popstroke on it? Are all four sides or...
Correct. If you could see to the left, you'll see like it's just a Popstroke sign on the left and right and facing the highway.
So, other three sides are just Popstroke, but this one will be the television because it's facing where everybody can see it while they're at...
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Um, you, excuse me.
Go ahead.
You said to show games on this tele...
ESPN.
Like football?
Now, will this be on when the, when Popstroke is closed? Will this television?
No, they shut off after business hours.
Okay.
The North and South sides of the sign do change. It shows the leaderboards, so it's not just Popstroke, but it's...
So, we can also make those static because we have a black and blue course? So, blue is on the left of my left. We can keep those static, and it would only change like every 15 seconds. And add a name, it's not something you'd see with, you know, distracting.
Correct.
So, the issue we have right now is just the one side? And it's because it's a video board?
So, question for city, if it had been requested in the original application?
It would have still come before you. As for the other portions of the sign, we are okay with it as long as it's still maintaining with that portion of the code that I gave you earlier, with that changing being simultaneous, simultaneously showing the scores is okay. They're still considered digital. It's really, the biggest thing with this one is it's not meeting those requirements of that digital technology. It's obviously changing much faster since it's acting as an actual television.
I will add that with our technology, we are able to play with the photometrics and dim it at certain times when needed.
So, with this being considered a sign, I know each case is individual, but how does this tie into any signage that we may see on McFarland Boulevard or University Boulevard or advertise?
So, essentially, with this, Popstroke itself, the use had to get approved via special exception by this board. It is for outdoor entertainment, which means a lot of the stuff that they are doing is outdoors. It is going to be distracting from the roadways as it is outdoor entertainment. I think with this specifically, where you can see the difference between what they're applying for of having this continual outdoor entertainment versus maybe any business could be that just any other business that's more stagnant, having a TV on the outside of their building is going to be distracting anyways. Is that kind of answering your question a little bit?
So, by nature of their business being outside, you do it outside. That's why the TV is needed because it's a part of the whole experience of outside entertainment. Any other question?
I'm sorry.
So...
Go ahead.
Are we voting on a special exception or a variance?
So, this is for a variance. The special exception was the outdoor entertainment use that got approved for Popstroke anyways.
So, now, it's a variance?
Variance for the sign from the sign regulations.
And the hardship would be? What you just said?
Yeah, by the nature of the business being an entertainment outside business would be like into the amphitheater, not being allowed to have big televisions to monitors because it's a part of being in... Okay.
Sir, do you see any other hardship besides what Ms. Cooley? Do you see a hardship with this other than what Ms. Cooley said?
I mean, it is part of our overall experience. Our other locations, this is, this is part of our being. Like, and it would be odd for us to not have a showcase screen on one of our locations. I understand where your laws are coming from, and we do agree with the other three sides being that they're facing McFarland in some way, shape, or form. This particular one, we feel, is not disturbing or distracting to any, any of the public.
So, I have been there. I think it's a great, great addition to Tuscaloosa. So, you have lower TVs, too. What would have, is it possible that you could make that like the rest of the signs at that height? I mean, you do have TVs, you have a lot of TVs down below this level. And do you, do you feel like, is this just a company thing that is required?
We truly believe it's more, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's more of the immersiveness of the experience that you get. And that's why we're coming to you with this. It's, it's to be able to sit in that courtyard and look up at that giant TV and watch a game or one of your favorite sporting events. We just feel like that's, that's part of the experience.
But you do have TVs. You can sit in the courtyard and watch.
No, so we do have other venues that have screens of this type on the golf course, but we understand that code here did not allow for that, so we went along with that. So, this is, it's, it's, it's important to us and to the experience of Popstroke for this, this, this screen to be able to play content. And again, I'll say where it faces, Harper Lee Drive, it's, there's a giant field. I took pictures of it today when I got into town. It's, by the time you get to the field, there's really, you can't tell what the content is. It's just lighting.
That may not always stay a field. Hopefully, it's developed. Looking to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up in opposition or in favor. Is there anyone present that would like to speak for or against the petition? At this time, we'll close public comment, and we will start with board comment. Mr. Rollins?
When, when we're dealing with these signs, it's, I seem to have some conflicting issues with them. It's almost like sometimes we have situations where the petitioner asks for forgiveness instead of permission. And I think some of that could have been addressed if it had have been in the paperwork from the beginning before it was actually built. And what I would hate to see is for us to look at this and we get down the road, we have another sign company may come up and say, well, Popstroke was approved for X, Y, Z, although it could be totally separate. Popstroke was approved for X, Y, Z, although it could be two totally separate, uh, businesses. This is an actual business that has a sign or a video board that's for their particular business as opposed to X, Y, Z sign company that wants to put up a video board going down, uh, McFarland Boulevard. And, um, I'm just having a, an issue, um, seeing the, the hardship. We understand the hardship can't be financial, so we, I feel as though the hardship hasn't been proved.
Ms. Holt?
I've been to Popstroke, had a ton of fun. Glad y'all are in Tuscaloosa. I've been back and forth about this one a little bit because when we grant variances, I'm always trying to think about, can I apply that to future variances and be comfortable with that decision if I say yes or no? I do think though, the fact that this got a special exception and has that outdoor venue case to it, the fact that Harper Lee doesn't have a ton of traffic on it, I, you know, again, I've been back and forth about this, but I, I think I'm good with this, um, just where it is and that it's showing, um, appropriate stuff. I think it might be kind of cool if you're in an RV there during football season and you've got a game on, that road becomes, you know, kind of an RV parking area. Michelle brought up the amphitheater, you know, those signs, they are a huge part of that experience. And so, I don't feel like this is overly egregious in any way or distracting, so I, I'm okay with this.
In, in looking at this, um, I do see the hardship that this is a part of the business model and structure. I think about other outdoor venues for, um, that have signs when you're, you're outdoors and you're, the experience. I feel like if this was just a static sign, it does kind of change how it's going to flow outside, and I do see the hardship. I would like to know from the City though, um, we seem to have issues like this with outside companies when they come in and their signs and do we? And we can address this later, what the process is, because it seems like out-of-town companies, when they come in, or chains, when they come in, they kind of always kind of get off on their signs, something about the signage. And so, I'm just wondering if we can kind of look at something on that process because I'm noticing every time we're dealing with signs, it's companies that are from not within the area. So, I don't know if it's something we're missing or not saying, or they're not saying it, and I, because I don't want to be known as the place that they can't do business, so. Um, that's something I believe, but as far as this, I don't see, uh, I do see the hardship. I do see that it's a part of the business and how the entertainment and outside entertainment, in that it would truly change how the, the venue would operate. So, I do see the hardship there.
I have also been there several times. I think it's an extremely wonderful addition to Tuscaloosa. I just fail to see the hardship in this. I, um, and I keep thinking of what's going to happen to the property adjacent to that. Hopefully, it will be developed, um, but I, I'm not in favor of granting this.
Um, I, I do see the hardship here as well. I mean, I, I think we've got three outdoor entertainment type styles here in Tuscaloosa with Bryant-Denny, the Amphitheater, and Popstroke. Um, and I know the other two do have video boards. Think it does add to the experience at Popstroke. Um, it is part of the business model. So, I, I don't have an issue with it.
At this time, we'll, uh, close board comments, and I'll read the petition. ZBA dash thirty-six dash twenty-four, Popstroke, Shane Rubashad. Petitions for a variance from the electronic, digital, and video sign regulations to maintain an existing sign on the property located at six eighty Harper Lee Drive, Zone BH, Council District Five. Voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
No.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Motion fails. Yes, we need to get to him?
Yeah. Sorry. Thank y'all. Okay, we'll move into our next case for the night. ZBA thirty-seven twenty-four. Chris Lyons petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at eighteen oh seven Seventeenth Avenue East, Zone R three, Council District Five. So, here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is east of Target. And then a closer aerial view of this home. There's one nearby short-term rental to the south. Here's a view of the front of that house. And of the driveway. So, Chris and Holly Lyons will be the primary contact in case of emergency. This is their first experience managing a short-term rental, but they do manage a long-term rental here in town. The house is equipped with security cameras, noise detection, and keypad locks. It is two bedrooms and one bathroom, and it is not owner-occupied. Petitioner is requesting six adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles based on existing driveway off-street parking and occupancy as it relates to parking. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Chris Lyons, eighteen oh seven Seventeenth Avenue East, Tuscaloosa. And, uh, I think you did a great job explaining it. I'm just trying to get the permit for short-term rental.
Do you have rules and regulations that have been posted?
Yes, ma'am, we do have them.
Okay. And you have, you've done, what are you going to do with the property when it's not being the short-term rental? You live in it?
Uh, I will not live in it, but family and friends that are visiting will be able to stay there.
So, basically, it'll just be short-term rental, and then after that, nobody will be in it?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up in opposition or in favor. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against? At this time, we'll close public comment. Go to board comments, starting with Mr. Eetman?
I'm considering there's one already in the area. Um, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's appropriate. I will agree with the City on this one. Four adults and two vehicles. After looking at the driveway and, um, as you know, stacked cars, if you do, do a couple, that can be an issue. Because there's no street parking on short-term rentals at all. Um, so I'm okay with the four, four adults, two vehicles.
Yeah, I agree also. I don't see any issue, as long as we, staff recommendation of four too.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I agree as well.
Okay, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition at this time. ZBA dash thirty-eight dash twenty-four, twenty-seven fifteen Stone, no, I'm sorry. ZBA dash thirty-seven dash twenty-four. Chris Lyons petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at eighteen oh seven Seventeenth Avenue East, Zone R three, Council District Five, for one year, thirty nights. Four cars, four adults and two cars. Voting with Mr. Eetman?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
Okay, board members, last case of the night. ZBA thirty-eight twenty-four, twenty-seven fifteen Stone Heights LLC. Petitions for a variance from the ground coverage ratio on the property located at fifteen seventeen Thirteenth Street, Zone R three, H, Council District Four. So, here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view. Here's a view of the front of that house. We're going to travel down this driveway to the rear structure. And then this is just looking back at the back of the house. Applicable regulations, so in the R three zoning district, the maximum ground coverage ratio is thirty-five percent. Petitioner is requesting a variance from that maximum ground coverage ratio in order to construct an open carport and a colonade, um, a veranda colonade. So, per petitioner, the primary purpose is to provide a convenient all-weather carport for two off-street parking spaces. This also will provide a covered pedestrian path from the parked vehicles to the rear entrance of the house. So, the current ground coverage ratio with the existing structures is right at about thirty-three percent. With these proposed additions, it will increase that overall ground coverage ratio to right around forty percent. The current home and accessory structure were constructed prior to the enactment of the nineteen seventy-two zoning ordinance. Per petitioner, since this dwelling and adjacent dwellings are located in the historic district and are subject to appropriate guidelines, improvements to single-family dwellings can make the residences more desirable, functional, and improve the value of the neighborhood. So, here's that existing site plan with that current thirty-three percent ground coverage ratio. And here is the proposed additions of that carport and that colonade. And just to make it a little bit easier on you, I've highlighted it. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the picture of the existing building, the, the live picture of it?
We did receive two written comments in opposition that were forwarded to the board.
Uh, Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Al Kabinist of Kabinist Engineering, six hundred Lurleen Wallace Boulevard South, uh, representing Hampton Callahan. He's a principal of, of this LLC. Hampton purchased this house and we, in the historic district and neighborhood, uh, university neighborhood area, we talked a lot about student-oriented housing versus traditional-oriented housing. And Hampton's goal here is, uh, trying to make this attractive to a young couple, professionals of young family that could actually, um, live here and enjoy the house. And he, he feels like, and I do agree with him, if we had a, and it's, it's just, just an open carport, a carport with a means to get groceries from the car to the house without running through the rain, uh, makes it a little more functional for, for a family, for the use he's really going after. We've done a few of these in this area, and it seems, it seems to be well-received, so. But anyway, we're running the file of the, of this, of this ground coverage ratio, ratio just because of what's already there. But we're, we're at forty percent instead of thirty-five. There is the driveway itself, um, uh, really from, from just about the back of the walk all the way in, it's, it's not paved, it's big gravel and an unpaved surface. So, I do have some absorption ability there, so it's not as if all of this was concrete and we're, we're building a roof structure right against a, a impervious surface. So, so it's, uh, that helps quite a bit. The topography of the lot itself is very flat as well. So, you just don't have a lot of tendency for runoff there.
Do you have an elevation of the height of the carport compared to the accessory structure? Is it going to meet the height of the roof line, or will it be lower than that?
We, we do, in the historic, and I don't know if we can get to that, I can.
I'll get it. I'm, I'm, I'll pull it up.
Or if you can just pull up that elevation of the accessory structure and show me where it is, then?
Because I can, I can draw on the thing, which I love to do. The drawing's probably better. The carport itself is one-story, so it's not.
That's what I was wondering.
The height of the accessory structure. It's really, um, rather than trying to add on to the side of the house, which we didn't want to do, we're putting it in the back. It's really going to be difficult to see from the street.
Got it. Thank you.
A little cross-section below might help too. So, there is get, getting you from the accessory structure to the dwelling, so carport and the covered colonade. We don't intend any more paving on the driveway either. From the street view, you would be able to see the gable end of the carport, just like you see the gable end of the larger accessory structure.
And this is not owner-occupied? This is for game day rental or?
He's, I, I mean, I think what he wants to do is, is get it ready to market. So, he's, he bought this, uh, it was partly redone on the inside, so the bathrooms have been upgraded, the kitchen has been upgraded. And, and I think now he's trying to get it, um, get it where it's more, he, he feels like this would be more valuable to him as a house.
And the apartment above the garage is being used as an apartment sometimes, which?
Yeah, and that, yeah, I don't want to holler from that, and I don't know, Hampton hasn't owned it long, so I don't know what the previous owner did. I don't have a history. You probably, being in the area, you probably know more about that than I do.
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one.
I think.
I just hate to see all the green space go away.
Can you go to the, the picture, the side picture?
Yeah, so what you're seeing in this, essentially here, so that's where that existing, I'm going to go right back to.
That is where that little fence area is.
Oh, okay.
So, it's kind of blocking it off.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
That, that's the little fence that creates that side yard.
Gotcha, okay.
That's really half the yard.
Okay, that, okay, yeah, okay, now I understand.
Yeah, so that, that fence right there is.
Is the actual backyard over there?
Well, actually, the more functional backyard's on the other side of it, really.
So, there's really not any trees or shrubs there today. It's just gravel. You're just building on top of gravel?
It's a, yeah, so there's gravel all the way to the, uh, all, all the way to the sidewalk. Then there's a sidewalk and a concrete apron there, but, but we're, we're gravel all the way in.
All right.
There's, uh, gravel and flagstones on the other side of the fence there, but no paving there as well.
And, and with it being a variance, what's, what's your hardship that you, that you're stating is your hardship?
Really, we, the hardship is because of what we got there, had that accessory structure not been, if it was not there at all, of course, I wouldn't have a problem at all. It'd probably be well under the thirty-five percent. We're just trying to figure out a way to get a covered carport, covered walkway to the, to the dwelling. And it's, um, we really don't want to tear down the accessory structure, and it's, I don't know if we could in the historic district anyway. It's difficult to tear stuff down in historic districts. So, I, I think by circumstances of this being built before the zoning ordinance existed, and the difficulty of, um, historic, historic district offers wonderful protections. One of the, one of the things that hurts us here is the difficulty to tear anything down, so.
And both structures were built before nineteen seventy-two, right?
So, I know, there was a comment that was submitted that the accessory structure had like an addition put on top of it to make it into, I'm not really a hundred percent sure. I didn't go back and look in the cases. I do know that, as Mr. Kabinist was saying, this is a historic district, so anything that is done to this property has to be approved by the HPC. This proposal is actually, if it were to be approved, is going to move forward to HPC for those architectural standards. So, anything that's done architecturally is going to have to be approved by HPC.
I'm just having a hard time seeing the hardship because it was purchased exactly like this, and it's not an owner-occupied home. It's.
Yeah, when, uh, I met Hampton, I don't know if he'd even closed on it. We first met out there, and he said, meet me out here. Here's, I'm going to buy this. Here's what I want to do. He may have already bought it then. I don't know. But anyway, uh, that was, his plan in purchasing it, of course, all along, was to do what we're here for tonight. Once we did the survey and calculated the impervious areas, the roofed areas, we were, we were right at thirty-three percent, so I didn't have, I didn't have much room left. And didn't really have a way to, and I, I don't have a way to fix that, which is, that's my hardship.
But it-
And I, and I do feel like the, you know, a carport getting you into the house is a, is a benefit.
So for the ground coverage ratio, is this for the accessory structure, the carport, and the house, or is it just the carport and the accessory structure since they're-
Any roofed structure is factored into that overall ground coverage ratio.
There's actually a little gazebo in the backyard. I don't know if that shows in a photo, but I did include that roofed area as well. So in the existing thirty-three percent, I'm counting that, and I'm counting this, and I'm counting the the house itself. Counting all, if the gazebo wasn't there, I'd probably be okay.
Will the historic district let you tear down the gazebo?
Yeah.
Can't speak for the board, but it's, yeah, we, I've taken cases to historic before when houses were burned almost beyond repair, and we've had, not been able to tear those down and had to rebuild some of them. Some of them, we were able to, so it's, it's, I think I would have, I feel like I'd have to have a much stronger case historic than I just want to tear it down.
So the hardship is, is the, because it's a historic home, you can't just go in and tear down the existing building or tear down the gazebo?
If it was not an historic district, I could-
Yeah, so that, that's, that's the hardship. You can't do with the property what you
Yeah.
want to do with it because it'd have to be, okay.
Yeah, if it was, if it was not an historic district, we could shave off part of the back of that, shave off part of the front of that. We could do anything we wanted to, and I could get there. But I can't do that in historic.
Got you.
And typically, we'll, if there's a variance required, I'm talking for Emily and don't intend to, we'll tend to come to you first, and so when we get to historic, historic won't be approving something with a tremendous number of architectural details, and, oh, by the way, you got to go to ZBA, and then, and then we're putting you on an unusual situation there. But historic's going to look at things like, like the little exposure rafter tails on this, we'll replicate those, the roof material, we'll replicate, I mean, those sorts of things. But yeah, if I, if I was, if I was not in historic, I could, I could fix the problem, and I wouldn't have to take up your time.
No problem.
Any other questions, Ms.? Thank you, Mr. Kabinist. We don't have anybody signed up for in opposition or in favor. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Tom Greisbach, fifteen fifteen Thirteenth Street. I live right adjacent to this property on this side of the drawing there. I'm not a public speaker, so if it, if it's all right with y'all, I'll just read a little brief statement. My name is Tom Greisbach. I rise, I rise in opposition to this petition for a variance exception. My wife and I have lived at fifteen fifteen for thirty-five years, and our backyard is adjacent to the property in question. In fact, our much-used patio is a mere thirteen feet from the edge of the planned carport. The proposed site plan calls for a two-car structure which would necessitate a quite large expanse of roof and supporting framework close to the property line. Our view to the west is already greatly impeded by the close proximity of the property's two-story accessory structure. Adding further blockage as, as does this proposal will significantly diminish the valued setting we've become quite used to. As we mentioned in our prior email to the board, the petitioner's claim of unnecessary hardship is based on an inconvenience issue, no mention of any handicap concerns, and is therefore not worthy grounds for exemption according to the board's own use variance requirements. We also cautioned against arbitrary relaxing of ground coverage ratios as we are already in close proximity in these neighborhoods. At risk is the continued goal of staying in harmony with the character of our historic surroundings. We ask that the board deny this petition permitting a structure that might temporarily benefit these new residents of fifteen seventeen during inclement weather as they visit our neighborhood while we here at fifteen fifteen have to live with the result on a permanent basis. We also believe the wrong decision could establish precedent and be detrimental to the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? At this time, we'd like to close public comment and start with board comments. Mr. Eetman? Wait. You want to respond?
I'll be brief. Can we go back to the, well, the photos of the backyard, maybe? Yeah, that's perfect. So really, the carport is, is about like that. So it's, because I'm, I'm below that window, it's not interfering with that window. And it's, it's, it's nowhere nearly as obtrusive from a view from this side as, as, of course, the existing, existing structure is. You know, cars are going to be parked here anyway, so I don't, I don't see, I don't see, if, if, if we were expanding this roofline to the front, that would be a tremendous problem for that view, but I think as low as this structure is, I don't think it's really going to be that much of a, that much of an issue there. If, I will say, if, if this was other than a single-family structure, the land development permit regulations would be, would be in place. So, single-family dwellings are exempt from land development permits. Everything else is, requires one. So what we mostly do, student housing, commercial buildings, retail buildings, that sort of thing, we're, we're always detaining the additional runoff. If, if the board wanted to make a motion that the LDP regulations for stormwater detention and, and runoff applied to this, and we'd have no problem with that. That would be real easy for us to do, which is simply going to mean I'm going to detain on site the addition and runoff. I don't have a problem doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or anything?
I don't think you can really get a picture from this angle of what we have to look at. If this proposal is accepted from our patio, looking up at that expanse of roof from the side, it's, uh, it's going to be a massive structure with a two-car carport there.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comment. Mr. Eetman?
I'm kind of torn about this one because I do see both sides of this story. I, I, I do. I mean, I, as much as it rains here, I would hate not to have a carport, but at the same time, I kind of agree it does not, I mean, I don't, I don't see it blocking views anymore than it's already blocking. It's pretty, pretty much a pretty large structure right there, right, uh, there currently, so. Kind of a little torn on this one, but, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
I'm still having a hard time finding a hardship because of all the structures already on the property, and, yeah, you got to, when you, when the house was purchased, you have to get out sometimes and walk in the rain to get to your door. I think there's maybe another way you could do this without using so much of the ground space. I am not in favor of the, of allowing the ratio.
I mean, the end of the properties were built, you know, prior to nineteen seventy-two, from what information we have. You know, I can understand, you know, wanting to get a carport in there. Uh, the roof line's just going a little above the door based off the rendering, so it's really not going to, to me, be any different than what's there today as far as eyesight. I can kind of see the hardship in the, being that it's in a historic district, you can't just go tear down, you know, another structure to get your ground coverage, so I'm, I'm leaning more in favor to it.
You know, I'm looking at it, and I would like to be covered walking from the car to the door. So I understand that part. The hardship is, like I asked, could you just tear down the gazebo? And you say, well, no, you can't. You have to ask the, um, the board. You know, that's the part about living in the historical district, and it's the rules and regulations for a reason. I don't see a problem with it. Um, I do understand it not being owner-occupied, but I, I feel like at some point, it's going to be somebody in there, and they're trying to make it more attractive. So I do see the hardship.
I don't see the hardship in it. Being in a covered space, walking in the elements, that's an inconvenience, not so much a hardship. And it was stated that if it wasn't in the historical district, then certain elements could be torn down and building wouldn't be a problem. But again, like Board Chair mentioned, that comes with being in the historical district. I mean, when you purchase a property in the historical district, there are the things that you have to deal with that you might not have to deal with in other areas, so with that being stated, I don't see a hardship. I'm not in favor.
Okay, we'll close board comment at this time. I will read the petition. ZBA dash thirty-eight dash twenty-four, twenty-seven fifteen Stone Heights LLC, petitions for a variance from the ground coverage ratio on the property located at fifteen seventeen Thirteenth Street, Zone R-dash-three-H, Council District Four. Voting with Mr. Eetman?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Petition failed. At this time, we are standing adjourned.